Welcome to the 2025 General Election Meet the Candidate Interview Forum. My name is Lindsay Allen and along with my colleagues Naomi Bouts, Javis Cornet, Hilo Hancock, and Tyrell Stevenson will be your moderators for this year's Meet the Candidate Series. This year's forum is presented by the Hagadon Media Group, Quicksilver Studios, and the Joint Public Policy Committee, which represents the Coeur d'Alene Regional, Hayden, Post Falls, and Rafterham Chambers of Commerce in partnership with the Coeur d'Alene-Post Falls Press. Our Meet the Candidate Series features a comprehensive lineup of local races, giving you the opportunity to hear directly from the individuals seeking to serve our communities. This year's interviews include candidates running for Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, Hayden, and Rafterham City Councils, Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls mayoral races, Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, and Lakeland school boards. Each candidate will discuss their priorities, perspectives, and approach to the issues shaping North Idaho's future. Candidates will have one minute to introduce themselves, two minutes to answer each of three questions, and one minute for closing remarks. We hope this forum helps you cast an informed, confident vote in our upcoming elections.
For this segment, we're going to be talking with candidates for Post Falls City Council. And we'll start with Ryan Davis. So what we'll do, we'll have a minute for you to introduce yourself, and then I'll ask three questions. And you'll have two minutes to answer each of those questions, and then another minute to close. So why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
My name is Ryan Davis. I am the current city council member for seat six, city of Post Falls. Was appointed last November when there was a vacancy, and so was set in and had the opportunity to kind of get my feet wet then, and have thoroughly enjoyed the process previously. I'd spent over 10 years in planning and zoning in the city of Post Falls, so became pretty familiar with the building process. I tell people, I was on planning and zoning when the meetings were six minutes, and I was on planning and zoning when the meetings were three and a half hours. So we got to see a lot of change take place during that. In addition to that, 14 years as the executive director of Boys and Girls Club of Cootney County, was able to start programs and build two facilities here, and currently five years into commercial lending with Bank CDA, so banker. So my wife and I moved up here in 2006, so we're coming up on 19 years living in the community, raised two children, graduates of Post Falls High School, Go Trojans, and yeah, that's kind of me in a nutshell.
All right, thanks. What does the city of Post Falls need to do to connect better with its residents?
I would say, growing up in Idaho and being a fourth generation farm kid, there are some components of Post Falls that rural feeling that people love and want to hold on to. In the same sense, we've gone through a series of growing pains, and I think what I hear more than anything, it's interesting, is how are we going to slow or stop growth? We recognize we're not going to stop growth. I've lived in communities, Craigmont, for instance, 700 people, the mill shut down, Highway 95 bypassed it, the town began to die. So you want to have a certain degree of growth that's taking place. Growth creates better connectivity with the roads, sidewalks, bike trails, there's just infrastructure pieces that are critical when we are in a stage of growth. I think what we need more than anything, and I feel like what the citizens are telling us, is we need to have smart strategic growth. I don't want to see the prairie developed and everything grown out there. I think we have got lots of little county infill pockets in the city of Post Falls that are ripe for the opportunity to annex in, but then to create some smaller projects. Because I think one of the big things that we're focusing on right now is affordable housing. That seems to be the big buzz right now, and we do want to create opportunity for everyone to be able to own a home. These infill projects give us the opportunity for a little bit of a more density, a little bit smaller lots, a little bit smaller homes, but it's going to create opportunities for folks that are coming in, in entry level positions and mid-level positions to be able to buy a house. Because, let's face it, used to, a new home was 800, 1100 square feet, now it's 1500 square feet. So I think there's some opportunity with that infill to create affordable housing. So slow the growth down, make sure we're smart with it, and create affordable housing.
All right. Can you assure voters that you will not raise property taxes, vote to raise property taxes? Whether yes or no, can you explain?
I would love to assure that we're not going to have to raise property taxes, but I've been very, very clear in the whole time of running, and as a city council member previously, I'm not a politician. So what I have told people is, is that we've had some really strong years of growth. With that growth comes some of the opportunity for us to be able to grow, some of our infrastructures and our roads and things to develop. My fear is, is that we've continued to take the city and the services that we're able to offer the city and continually take it to the next level. The fear is, is what if the growth stops? If the growth stops, I can't imagine citizens saying, it's all right, you can take the snowplows, we don't need snowplows, or we don't need Parks and Rec programs. So my fear is, is that if we do hit a poor part of very slow growth, or if we do have a part where growth slows down and stops altogether, unfortunately, to keep the services at a high level, we're going to have to address taxes. And that could mean that we're going to have to see some tax increases. I don't want to do that, I want to avoid it at all costs. I think we've done a good job of being smart and managing. Basically, with the budget that we're looking at for the future, it's a freeze, zero hires, very little activity, and it's because we're trying to avoid seeing serious tax increases. So I want to avoid it at all costs, but we have to be careful to watch the growth.
All right. What do you believe is the top challenge facing the city in the years ahead, and what can be done about it?
You know, I think the continued growth, we're seeing interest rates beginning to creep down a little bit, which means that you're going to see more activity in the real estate market, which means more people are going to move here. I think that continuing to manage that growth, like I mentioned previously, as efficient as possible, focusing on smaller projects, I think that's critical. I think the other biggest piece that I'm finding is, I don't want to say misinformation, but really a lack of information that's out there. I run across people all the time that are saying, I hear this, I hear that, I hear the other, they're simply not true statements. So I think that we could do a much better job with communication. I want to open the door and be able to have conversation, and not just have conversation during public hearings. Sometimes that can get a little bit emotional, and I'm all about setting emotion aside, looking at our land use map, our comprehensive plan, and being able to walk a landowner or a neighbor of a landowner who wants to do some development, walk them through the process so that they understand. We hear all the time, oh, there's been all this significant growth, but when you really look at it, some of that growth had been planned for years, and it just all kind of came on at once. So educating people that it doesn't happen overnight, we do care and we do listen, and I think working together. So I think we just need to continue to refine working together as a city, as the citizens of the city, to make it better.
All right, thanks. Well, if you'd like to take a minute and offer some closing remarks?
Again, I would say, 19 years living in Post Falls since the day we moved to North Idaho, that's where we planted. Again, fourth generation farm kid, so I've grown up in Idaho, I know what the small town feels like. I've had some opportunity in Southern Idaho, so I've got to see what the city is like. I'm a country kid. And that's one of the things that I really want to try to hold on to, Post Falls, let's be smart with our growth, continue to allow the culture that everyone loves and that everyone comes to, to maintain. And again, I think the biggest thing is, I like to listen, I like to visit with people, and I think that face-to-face is so important, that's why I'm just trying to get out and reach out to people. I think communication is the key in any relationship, especially with citizens and the city.
All right. Well, Ryan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For our next candidate, who is in the running for the Post Falls City Council, Aaron Plou. Aaron, you'll have one minute to introduce yourself, then I'll ask you three questions, which you'll have two minutes to answer each question. Finally, you'll have one minute for closing statements. Aaron, please tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, well, being concise has never been a gift of mine, so I'll try and get it done quickly. But I moved here five years ago from Orange County with my wife and seven children. My parents followed shortly thereafter, and we just love this area. We're real stakeholders here, we've got those kids that we're raising here, we want them to love this place as much as we do, and we want to ensure that the future is bright for everyone in Post Falls, and I've got a vested interest in that for my children as well. So that's, you know, I'm a businessman, I'm in the manufacturing sector, I've been doing that, that's a mid-career in that, and really, I think there's a lot of overlap. As I've been on the city council, I was appointed in January to the seat unanimously by the city council, and I find there's a ton of overlap between my day-to-day work and what I do for the city. So that's exciting, because I feel like there's immediate competency there. So it's, I'm just looking forward to the future.
Thank you. For our first question, what does the city of Post Falls need to do better to connect with its residents?
Communication is important. It's one of the things I've noticed in my time there is participation. People need to know that their voices really matter. When you're in a small town like Post Falls is, you come out and make your voice heard, and it's heard. There's not millions of people, there's tens of thousands of people, and it's just as simple as paying attention to what's going on. We publish all the big things that are going on, we have town halls, we have round tables. All that needs to happen is come out, we're people living shoulder to shoulder with you. I talk to residents in my neighborhood, I walk a lot in my neighborhood, and I actually have neighbors who joke about that, there goes that news van again, and it's me walking by, just constantly pacing the neighborhood. But anyway, so I get to connect with a lot of my neighbors like that, and take a lot of that back to city council with me. But it's so real, just to show up. I mean, when we have 20 people show up, it's like, okay, this is great, people are here, people want to talk, we need to hear those concerns, we need that input, especially when we have events like planning for the comprehensive plan, the input from citizens then is critical. Make your voice heard, and it's as simple as taking an hour or two out of your evening on a Tuesday night and showing up and making your voice heard. And again, because we live next door to you, you know, we're not in some tower in Post Falls, it's just a little city, and that's really special, that's one of the things that I love about it. And so, you know, we take seriously the feedback, we have to, we live with you. So that's what I would say.
Thank you. For our next question, can you assure voters that you will not vote to raise property tax? Whether yes or no, please give or provide an explanation.
You know, unfortunately, Post Falls has been growing, and that's not unfortunate, it's on the map, growth is going to happen, but for the last almost 20 years, we've been riding that, the revenue from growth on the coattails of that revenue, and growth catches up to you. At a certain point, as much as you want growth to pay for itself, there are costs to infrastructure that have to be made. We cannot kick the can down the field and say, oh, well, we'll wait to fix that pipe, we'll wait to fix that street. It's a million dollars a lane mile to pave a road in Post Falls. That's a lot of money. And one of the essential things I think everyone wants in a city is clean, safe, well-maintained infrastructure and streets and the city that you live in. You want to be able to say, at the end of the day, I love Post Falls, no ifs, ands, or buts about it, this is my town, I'm proud of it, not, oh, you know, we're right next to Coeur d'Alene, you may have heard of that, you know, no, we're Post Falls, and we're going to stand out, we're going to be a shining city, a beautiful city. But yeah, we do, we do have some things to account for as far as the growth that we've already done, that hasn't paid for itself, we have to take that seriously. So in my mind, the city should be run lean and efficient with no waste. It's really easy for any organization to end up bloated, and, oh, I'm spending money on this, I'm spending money on that, instead of, you know, no, hey, who are we? We need a reality check, we're Post Falls, okay? So you want to do this fancy consultation or pay for that, that would be nice to have. I'd love for you to have that internal communication consultant come in for $120,000, but that's not something that we need, and to be lean and efficient and take all of our needs seriously without overburdening our citizens, that's what we got to do.
Thank you. For our final question, what do you believe is the top challenge facing the city in years ahead, and what can be done about it?
Yeah, as I alluded to in the last question, myself, my neighbors, everybody that I've talked to in the city, on the streets, I was knocking on doors yesterday, meeting people, which was a lot of fun, and of course, top of mind is growth. What are we doing? What are we, how are we going to face it? And I think the last 10, 15 years, we've kind of been on autopilot, hey, you know, this is so nice, look at all this money, and all these new homes are going up, and things like that. That's slowing down, and it's time for a reckoning. So we're going to have to take that growth seriously, we need to think smart. Cities, good cities, quality cities, don't just happen. You have to have a vision, you have to have, how do I anchor this community? How do I keep these streets from, you can't constantly, and you don't want to constantly be expanding the roadways, right? That's not a solution, that's a Band-Aid, you know? So you have to lay out the city and your comprehensive plan in a way that doesn't require Band-Aids, allows people to stay close to their homes for services. I need to run to the coffee shop, I need to run to the store for some groceries, we need to put things near our citizens so that they have quick access to them, and they don't have to go 15, 20 minutes to the same grocery store that everybody else is going to. You know, Walmart's great and everything, but that can't be the only place for people to show up and shop. And, you know, that's an opportunity for small businesses too. You create those small commercial hubs, and people have that walkable neighborhood, that's amazing. The quality of life is like through the roof with something like that. So that's, that's our biggest challenge, and everyone knows it, and that's what I'm here to do, is face that down and do it with a vision, and with some knowledge about how great cities are made.
Thank you. Now is the time for your closing statements. You'll have one minute, as I previously mentioned, and the time is now yours.
Okay. As I started out saying, I love Post Falls, and I want to love Post Falls in 10 years. I want my kids to love Post Falls in 10 years, I want my neighbors to love Post Falls in 10 years, and I think we can do that. I think we have some good people running for council, running for mayor right now, some good people on the council already, we have great city staff, and I think we can get there. I think it's doable. It's just going to take, you know, everybody taking it seriously and not going for political points, but hey, this is the reality, this is what we need to do, this is, this is everyone's lives, you know, people's jobs. There's nothing more important than the place that you live, and you want to be able, ideally to be able to, you know, not only live there, but work there and play there, and be proud of that place and say, that's where I'm from.
Thank you for sharing that, and thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Aaron.
Well, we've been speaking with candidates for Post Falls City Council, and with us tonight is Mark Luca. Welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Yeah, so we've got some questions. First, give you a minute to kind of introduce yourself, and then I'll go into questions, I'll have three of them, you'll have two minutes each to answer those, and then another minute to close. So why don't we start by just telling us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Well, thanks for the opportunity, and thanks for hosting this. We have a lot of candidates to get through, and I just really appreciate it, and thanks to everyone who's watching, it's really a, it shows that you're interested and engaged, which, you know, too many people aren't, so thank you for that. My name is Mark Luca, I'm a husband, I'm a dad, a homeschool dad. I graduated from college with a degree in communications and biblical studies, and I'm a church volunteer leader, a trail life scout leader, commissioner for the Ross Point Water District. I've previously served as a deputy sheriff, and worked in party politics, legislative politics, from the local level to the presidential level, and I've been a small business owner, and I now manage operations in the security field.
All right, thank you. Well, we'll get into the questions. First, what does the city of Post Falls need to do to connect better with its residents?
Well, certainly, they do some things well, I mean, there's, there's some engagement on the website, and very good with the agendas and things, but I think that we could always do more. Certainly getting out in the community, talking to people, and finding out what it is that their needs are, and the people have some concerns, and, and I think that those need to be addressed, and the only way we're going to address them is if we actually go out and talk to people. And so, you know, I'm going out and actually speaking to voters door-to-door, or at events and things like that, and I think that that's, that's the way to engage with people.
All right. Can you assure voters that you will not vote to raise property taxes? And whether yes or no, can you explain?
Sure. I can say that my natural benefit is to say, we won't raise property taxes, certainly something could happen where, where it may need to happen, but barring some sort of emergency situation, I would say I'm a solid no on raising taxes.
All right. What do you believe is the top challenge facing the city in the years ahead, and what can be done about it?
Well, it's a great question. When you ask voters in the city, you get 100% of the people say there are really three issues, it's growth, growth, and growth. And we need to get control of it. Like a marriage or a business, we have to grow or we're going to die, right? There's no stagnation, that's not a place you want to be in, but it doesn't have to be this fast. We can slow down, we can grow with intention, and we can have a place that the next generation wants to call home, and has a place to call home. So we have to not just make it possible, we have to make it, give them a reason to stay. And it's only going to happen if we get on the comprehensive plan, which is being updated this year. That's the main reason I'm running, is because of this issue, Post Falls being at a crossroads where the next 10 years are going to be defined on the decisions that the council makes in the next year. And we need to look at the zoning for areas that are coming into the city particularly, and just ask, you know, do we want to continue to just throw growth up and build as fast as we can, or do we want to put some intention behind that, and, and get more citizen input, find out what people want, and grow, like I said, with intention? Another issue is the revolving door at the police department, we need to get control of that, and that's largely driven by pay, and so we're paying money now to recruit people, to bring them on, and just to see them leave within a few years to go to higher-paying departments. So if we put that money into retention rather than into recruitment, we would see that we would have a significant offset, we'll invest in the stability of our community and the safety of it, and Post Falls won't just be a stepping stone, but more so will be a destination where people want to come and work, because we do have a great community, we just have to allow people to afford to live there.
Thanks. Why don't you close and wrap this up for us?
Sure. Well, again, thanks for being with us. On the conservative side of politics particularly, we too often elect people who promise to govern by conservative principles, but then once they're in office, they move to the left. And like Lucy pulling the football out from Charlie Brown, we keep doing it. I won't be that way. I have a 20-year record of conservative activism, and I've shown that I work to change the system, not allow the system to change me. And I'm governed by the values that made our country possible and made it great, and that's faith, family, and freedom. Faith is what gave us the gift of Western civilization on which our country was built, and we need to help support our families as they are the cell that keeps our city and our country vibrant. And then we provide the highest degree of freedom that we possibly can with the least government interference into everyday life. So that's the recipe for a vibrant city, a country and state, and that's what I'll deliver for the people of Post Falls. If you'd like to help or find out more, get in touch with me, you can reach me at markluca.com, that's M-A-R-C-L-U-C-A dot com, and thanks again for joining us, thanks for hosting.
All right, thank you for coming down, we really appreciate it.
It's my pleasure.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Allen, I am a local Realtor with EXP. I wanted to get involved, I wanted to do more volunteering, but I never really knew where to start. Being involved with the Chamber has exposed me to so many different people and causes and nonprofits and volunteer opportunities and leadership opportunities that I would never get anywhere else. If you have a heart for service and you're looking to get involved, or you want to do something bigger than you, you need to be here at the Chamber. Come down here, come to an event, get involved, get on a committee, and give back.
Well, next up is James Stephenson, he's running for Post Falls City Council. And James, why don't you take a minute and introduce yourself, and tell the voters why you're running for city council?
Sure. Thank you guys for doing this. My name's James Stephenson, running for Post Falls City Council, seat two. I've been in Post Falls for 15 years, basically raising my whole family here, when we moved here, we had a toddler, now we have a high schooler and a middle schooler. Eight years ago, I got on planning and zoning, just tried to get involved in the, in the city and doing other stuff. Before that, I had done coaching with Parks and Rec, and as my kids got older, they didn't need me to coach that, so tried to find something else to do. But one of the reasons that I wanted to, to run for city council is kind of concerned with the lack of experience that we have on our council right now. We have a couple members that have, not only have not lived here that long, but have only, you know, they haven't lived here that long, and they've only been on council for two or three years, a lot of longtime people have been out of there. So I have that experience, the eight years on planning and zoning has basically given me the experience to be able to hit the ground running with the city council.
Okay, James, so the first question we have for you this evening is, what does the city of Post Falls need to do to connect better with its residents?
I think the city does a fairly good job at connecting with the residents. What I have heard in planning and zoning meetings is people don't know when things are happening and whatnot, but everything is posted on the website, there is obviously those public, the yellow signs out there when there's hearings and things like that. But a lot of people don't have the internet, a lot of people don't have the paper, so a lot of people don't know when this is. I don't know if we got a, there can be some sort of email list, I know that's been brought up beforehand, if we could gather email addresses, I'm sure the city has them, especially since they have water bills and whatnot, I'm sure we have that kind of type of information. For me, if elected, I want to have just open conversation, continue to have my Facebook page, and people, you know, calling me or emailing me, doing things like that, have town halls and whatnot, but I think the city does a fairly decent job. You know, at Post Falls days, when we had, doing the surveys and things out there, we had, I think, 150 people one day. Now, that was a great location just for people to come out there, because everybody goes to that, and I don't think people were expecting it, but once you kind of engage them and start talking, and they realize you weren't trying to sell them something, they really kind of opened up, and we got a good, a lot of good feedback from there. So maybe more activities like that would be really good, you know, July 4th and other things like that, where the city's out there doing things like that.
Thank you. So the next question we have for you is, can you assure voters that you will not vote to raise property taxes? Whether the answer is yes or no, please provide an explanation.
I can't assure them, I will definitely try not to, that's for sure. Being a conservative, physical conservative person, we don't want to raise taxes, everything is so expensive as it is now, especially coming after COVID with the inflation, prices are still rising, like just what we talked about, affordable housing. I think you have to look at the budget line by line. So in my daily job, I'm a project manager at a regional bank, and we have budgets, and we look at those line by line, do we need this? And that's what you got to do with the city, you kind of almost, I wouldn't say run it like a business, but look at it, line by line, okay, do we need this, doing this, is there a better way to do this, is there a cheaper way to do this? You have to look at that. Now, nobody knows, if everybody had a crystal ball, we wouldn't even be talking about this. But nobody knows what the future behold, but I think my plan is the going into this is, okay, what does that budget look like? How can we save money now so we don't have to raise taxes later?
Very good, thank you. And the final question we have for you tonight, James, is what do you believe the top challenge facing the city in the years ahead will be, and what can be done about it?
I think it's, it's a mixture of kind of what we've talked about, the affordable housing, the budget, people, a lot of people concerned about People, a lot of people concerned about the recent tax increases. And then growth, even going back before 2020, when this place really started to explode. If you look back 10, 20, 30 years, Post Falls has been growing every year since then. Every decade is double digit growth. So that is what, we have to figure out a way to manage that growth. I think we were caught off, a little offhand with the amount of growth right after COVID, 2021, 2022. Everybody saw a spike in their housing and their property tax bills. Now that's kind of leveled off and some people are calling it the new norm. Everything's at that new level. But we have to look at that. One of the city, the city's doing right now is the comprehensive plan. So they're kind of in the middle of that. There's lots of workshops. I volunteered at Post Falls Days and we were taking surveys from people saying, what are your top concerns? Growth was a huge one, affordable housing was a huge one. But we were taking all that information and say, okay, what are we going to do? And then we're going to build out the next 20 year plan. Now, I think because the other plan was built before 2020, it didn't take an effect of what actually happened in that time. And now we're kind of playing catch up to do it. I think there's a lot of infrastructure plans that are going on. Obviously, 41 and 90 is huge. While this is not technically in Post Falls, the widening of 90 is going to be huge. All those are going to help us long term maintain. But the city itself has just individual things it needs to work on as far as infrastructure. A lot of people are concerned about the water and the aquifer, what's going to happen out there as we expand to the prairie. So there's not, there's a lot of different things. But I think the big things are, you know, growth, affordable housing and the infrastructure and just how are we going to manage those going forward? And I think that starts with residents coming and, and talking to us about the comprehensive plan as we build that out.
Great, thank you. So we're at the end of our segment and you'll now have a minute to tell the voters what maybe closing statement you might have for them and what you want to leave them with.
All right. Thank you. In closing, I just want to thank you guys for doing this. Thanks to everybody that's already voted because there's been absentee ballot going on, early voting. We'll start here in a couple of weeks. But like I said, one of the reasons I'm running is because I think I have the experience to be able to jump in from day one. My opponent has only lived here for four and a half years, where I've been here for 15. I've been on planning and zoning for eight years. So I have that experience to be able to hit the ground running day one. I kind of think of, and I brought this up at other, other meetings and talking to people. Imagine you're like this, if you say you owned a business and you had to hire somebody. You have a multimillion dollar business with thousands of employees. Are you going to look at the applicant that has years of experience? Or are you going to look at the applicant that was just appointed to a position nine months ago? And that's his experience? I think really everybody's going to look at the person that has experience with any job. So that's where I'm at. I'll be able to hit the ground running. So I appreciate everybody's vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Joint Public Policy Committee representing the Coeur d'Alene Regional, Hayden, Post Falls, and Rathjum Chambers of Commerce, in partnership with the Hegadon Media Group, the Coeur d'Alene Post Falls Press, Lindsay Tyrell, Javis Hilo, and I want to thank all of the candidates for taking part in this year's Meet the Candidate Series. We also extend our thanks to the production teams at Quicksilver Studios, Hegadon Media Group, and the Coeur d'Alene Press. And of course, to you, the voters, for watching and learning about the individuals who wish to serve our community. Over the two evenings, we've listened to those who aim to lead and represent our cities and schools. And because voting is one of the most powerful rights and responsibilities we share as Americans, we encourage everyone to stay engaged, stay informed, and most importantly, exercise your right to vote.